So I'll call our meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Well, on behalf of Planning Commission, welcome to our Planning Commission meeting for January 14, 2025. And I'm just getting comfortable with '25 here, so. For those of you that have not been with us before, our standard procedure is to look to our staff, our planners and our engineer, for an explanation of the applications that are in front of us. Look to the applicant for their comments and description of their application. Invite comments from anyone in the audience who's here to offer comment. We deliberate, make a decision, and that's the process. Before we get started, we have a new member, who's Tom Valamas. And Tom joins us now. He's a long-term resident of the city, lives over by Cranbrook. Spent a couple of years renovating the house that he lives in, and it's a beautiful home. I know where it's at. And welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So our first items are administrative related, and it's the approval of our minutes from our past meetings. And we have two to approve here. One is the regular meeting that we had on December 10, which is a regular meeting. And does anyone have any comment or a motion to approve these?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we adopt the minutes that have been submitted to us and both the December 10th and December 19th meeting.
Okay. And since I was at the 19th, I'll support that motion.
Oh, so you're doing both of them? I was gonna do them singly, but...
Yeah, I thought you said both, but whatever.
Oh, so I should probably do them both separately. I'll just do them. So the first one?
December 10th.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then we had a second meeting, which was not a regular scheduled meeting. It was a subcommittee meeting, but it turned out, we ended up having a quorum of Planning Commissioners. So it turned into sort of a regular meeting. And so for that, I'd ask for any comments or a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Just an administrative thing, and I... Oh, Amy's gone. I looked this up. I thought, well, if you're at a meeting, and... Or if you're not at a meeting, can you approve the minutes? And so I went back into Robert's Rules, and it says, even if you're not at a meeting, you can vote on approving the minutes. Just as an FYI. I didn't know the answer, and so that's... If anyone cares, or maybe not...
This makes a lot of sense, but I'm glad you did that.
But anyway, for whatever it's worth. So our first item is, "The Planning Commission will consider the request of the property owner at 234..." That's nice, 234. "Barden Road," for approval to install a pool and a fence in the side yard.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Eric Peach. I'm with Githlins Webster, the city's planning consultant. Apologies in advance. Looks like we had a little bit of glitch with the presentation, so if there's a little extra toggling, bear with me as I search for the slide that might be most appropriate for our discussion today. But the first item before you is 234 Barden Road. This is for a side yard pool and a side yard fence application. So this is located within the A1 zoning district up against Barden Road on the west side. Zooming in a little bit further, here's the lot layout. And so let me go to the yard determination graphic here. So Barden Road is over here on the right. The home is not highlighted here. On either side is the side yard. There's a large front yard, and then, of course, the rear yard in the back. And so what's proposed is a small, little, I believe it's six-by-10-foot pool with a fence surrounding the pool, which is required as standard. So the reason why there's a side yard location and not necessarily a rear yard location is due to the orientation of the house. So there's a patio back here. So facing south is more of the orientation of the house's backside, and so that's why the proposed improvements are within the side yard facing south. So zooming in just a little bit more to give you some detail. In some of the pictures that you'll see, there's quite a significant drop in elevation going towards the property line. And then you can see the outline of the fence here, and then the footprint of the proposed pool in that location there. I believe it's six by 10, not six by 12. So when applying the ordinance standards, we find that everything is in compliance with setbacks primarily, but it's here that the Planning Commission is required to consider the pool and spa in the side yard, and then the pool fence, the location, that being in the side yard. But otherwise, the size of the fence, the material of the fence is pretty standard for what we see here. So in working with the applicant, we met back in either August or September of this year at an office hours meeting, so it was pre-submital to go over the plans. And one of the things we stressed first and foremost was to ensure that if the improvements were approved in the side yard, that there's adequate screening. And so we took the last few weeks working with the applicant to get a sufficient proposal in terms of the screening of the fence. So we did do a site visit a few weeks ago, took some pictures from these locations on the site, and identified areas where we believe there should be additional screening. So the portion in the rear yard, there is existing vegetation in the back that helps to screen, but as the ordinance states, fences in the rear yard don't necessarily require screening, but it's those locations where it's in the side yard, and any yard where it faces the street, visibility from the street should be minimized. So when going through the landscape plan for screening, just to give you some orientation here, Barden Road is facing this direction. So the front of the house is on the left side of your screen. South is to the upper part of the screen. The rear yard is to the right. And then the north side of the house is to the bottom. So looking out towards the pool in the... On the backside of the house, the major concern for screening was this area here. So in addition to existing trees, mature trees, the applicant has opted for immediate screening. And what those are, are 15 three-foot unimis shrubs. And those are five feet on center, so we did look at the planting dimensions, the spacing dimensions, so that we were able to determine that the full length of the fence is screened in that location. Same thing here on the side. These would amount to eight five-foot arborvitae. And then there's an existing eight arborvitae here. And then what's being proposed is to continue that with 13 additional five-foot arborvitae to ensure that there's no visibility from the street. And then this is just the same depiction, more or less, but just showing that they're five-foot arborvitae along the front of the fence, and then this is what the shrub unimis looks like. And I apologize for the font size and the legibility of this. So again, there's the pool, the pool fence, and then the proposed screening surrounding it. So this is just the planting plan. So if there's any questions about how many shrubs or trees are planted for each segment of fence, we can refer back to this screen, but it's primarily the unimis and the arborvitae. So the last few pictures of slides show pictures of different perspectives on the property. So this would be looking towards the south property line, again, where we had the most concerns. Existing clump of trees shown here, that helps with the screening from the neighboring property, but as you can see, a little bit of gaps shown here against the property line. So the idea is to provide the immediate screening where the pool fence will be. The pool fence will be about 70 feet, I think, at its closest to the property line, so it is quite a distance from the neighboring property. And then this would be looking towards the backyard, the rear yard. This would be that south property line here with some existing trees, facing the back, the rear yard, facing westward. And then this is looking towards the street. So these are those existing arborvitae, and then that'll be extended here so that there's no visibility from the street. And again, to point those out here, this is that area. Again, the orientation of the house kind of functions as the backside within the side yard. And then as you can see, there's grade changes. That slopes downward away from the house. Along the south property line, this is looking back towards the house, more towards the street, but looking back towards the rear yard, this would be the south property line, and then the improvements up closer to the house. And then again, along the south property line, looking back towards those existing trees. And then this is kind of a buffer area that helps visibility, to reduce the visibility into the yard from the street. And then this is pulled back from that same perspective closer to the street, showing the existing arborvitae for reference, and then just kind of a full perspective of what you see from a standpoint on the street. So that concludes my presentation. City engineers here, if there's any question, I don't know, Leah, if you have a presentation or anything to add?
I can add something.
Okay. So again, side yard improvements, the main thing that we were in communication with the applicant was primarily for screening, and to just have an adequate presentation of the Planning Commission to demonstrate that we did look at that. Any questions?
Any questions for Eric?
What was the thinking of limiting the unimis plantings to three feet when the fence is gonna be four feet?
As far as I understand, that species of shrub, unimis, grows to five feet. So it's the initial planting that is the three, but that those are anticipated to grow to five.
Any other questions?
I believe the applicant is here.
Leah, did you want to say something?
I need to just...
If not, if you... If not, you don't have to if you don't want to.
It's okay, I'm here. So we don't really have any engineering-related items. Since the pool is so small, we don't think it has an impact on drainage of the neighboring properties. But I did just have a couple of things to show about the current drainage patterns, if there were any questions. But the home in the back, it drains to the front. Eric showed a lot of those photos. That shows that steep topography going down to Barden Road, and then it also drains towards the back corner. And then as far as Barden Road goes, there are storm sewers existing that do collect the water and outlet into a pond in the neighborhood. So just kind of wanted to point out that we did look at drainage, and just because of the small nature of the pool, they weren't proposing any additional storm improvements, and we felt that was appropriate, given the scale of their proposal.
Does this... How deep is this pool? And I guess maybe that's to you, Eric.
I don't have that information, actually. I don't have that detail. Do we know the four feet?
So there's a rule, and I guess I don't know it off the top of my head, but...
We looked at the depth requirement for a fence. I believe it's 18 inches?
18 inches.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
We looked at that early on, many months ago.
All right. I take it you're the applicant?
I'm the...
Oh.
I'm the owner.
Okay.
At least the staff.
Okay. Would you like to offer a comment, or...
I don't feel that there's anything else. I think that they've covered everything pretty well.
Okay, we have questions for them there?
Do you have... Yeah?
Yeah, I have a question. First of all, really cool property.
Thank you.
That you found. It's gonna be really pretty. Why such a small pool? Four feet's the perfect size, by the way. I have a four-foot pool, like, it's ideal, but just a small pool?
It's just my husband and I at home, so...
Okay, it'd be cool. You can do a saltwater, saltwater one, for such a small amount?
No, I think it was gonna be natural. We went to Mexico a couple of years ago, when we had a little plunge pool outside of our own.
Same idea?
That trip's gonna cost us a lot of money.
Yeah. I fell in love with that.
Because that's where we got the inspiration, and then I found our builder was... I was excited about the project.
Your landscaper, is your landscaping person here today?
No, my landscapers took hold of it.
Oh, okay. So my questions are more to the landscaping. I too am looking at 10 different varieties of unimis bushes, and we're playing around with the whole putting in of... Again, it's more interesting than something else, so I think that's great. When you were looking at that, did your landscaper say it would be at four feet in one year on the growth cycle? That it takes about...
They are fast growers.
Okay, so they're fast growers?
This is why that variety in Manhattan was chosen.
Okay. And it's evergreen year-round?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the other reason that variety...
Is this one a flowering one?
Yeah, a little bit of flowers.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, well, I think that's always my only question for the landscapers.
Does anyone in the audience have any comment? Other comment? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Ollie Fractor. We live across the street on Barden Woods 2, 1 and 2. And our concern is more along what was spoken about the drainage issue. Dave knows what that's about. But on how, when, how much water will be the excess water possibly drain out when you have to enter the pool, right? I don't know what the process is on the pool, how much excess will... There are catch basins there, but unfortunately, they aren't enough to even keep maintaining the capacity of what goes down Barden Road from Long Lake.
I have a quick answer on that pool. So a four-foot pool, every year when they drain it, they don't drain it. You need to have the weight of the water stay in the pool, so they're only going to lower it to the point where the drains are, which is about a foot and a half. And this is a heavily wooded site. I... When I'm only draining that much, I'm actually draining it slowly onto the property, as opposed to putting it into the street. Because of what I learned here about the... Getting the chlorine out of the pool first, you let the chlorine die in the pool first before you do any drainage on your own property. And it's just a very slow, small pump for such a small pool that is gonna absorb into their... Into their back property. And again, it's only a few gallons, a few gallons, 40 or so. They have to only lower it about this much in order for it not to float up, especially such a small pool. So that's my experience with that for 25 years.
So I'm impressed.
Oh, yeah.
That was great.
That's the process that they involve in here.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, that's what we're here for, because we do quite an issue with insurance issues. It was a huge level on our property, and I just wanted to see and hear and understand what was gonna transpire and if it would detrimentally expose us to other liabilities because of any increased water.
So I have a question. And it really, this small pool, so you're not gonna see it from the road, and I get that. When I looked at this, and then looked at the plan, my only question was whether or not we were gonna properly screen the fence, because that's really all we care about at this point, because you're not gonna see the pool, and you're not building a structure. So Eric, can you go back a couple in your images here, where you can see... Back one more, where you see the front of the house? Go back to that one. So where it shows, like, where the end of the arrow is? So those arborvitae, they sort of go, but they go back. They don't go... This image, these pictures show them going straight. And really, they... There's like five of them, and then they go back rather than coming straight across. So... And then you've got the hill. And so you're gonna see the fence from Barden Road?
Well, that's a good observation, but we're gonna have to reorder with four or five of those to go down the hill instead of west.
So you're going to... You're gonna replant those?
Yeah, we'll just let... To accommodate the fence.
How long have they been there? You think you're gonna be able to...
A year, two.
Oh, so they were recently planted?
Yeah, like in the past, maybe two years.
Oh, so you're gonna pull those out and then put them in a straight line?
Yes, yeah, to accommodate the fence.
Okay.
It'll be behind them.
Okay. So... And then I was looking at the numbers, and the numbers were different between... This said you were gonna plant eight, and then this says you were gonna plant 13, and I just wasn't...
You might not have the update, because I don't know if you received it. I sent it to you. But we're... Eight are existing, and then we're gonna add 13.
Oh.
21, and they spread...
Yeah, this says new, that you're gonna plant eight new ones here, and then this says you're gonna put 13 in, and so I just wasn't sure. So what I saw was, I saw some of these going back and not being in a straight line. And then I wasn't sure how many you were gonna plant.
Yeah.
And so you're gonna remove them, plant them straight, and that should cover up the...
And add 13 more.
Right, okay.
And probably curb it down a little bit. You can't see that from the road, but that's what we do.
Right, I get it. The only other thing that you'd probably see is the side of the fence, and, you know, when you're there, you can sort of see your neighbor's fence. So to Commissioner Hessler's question, normally, we wanna just cover up the whole fence. We wanna screen the fence. So if it's only... If the plantings are only three feet, planting 15 of those plants over like 90 feet, I guess...
They're the Manhattan ones, correct?
Yeah, they have a six-foot spread. They grow five to 10 feet tall.
Yeah, I pulled up the picture. They're...
Yeah, actually, you have... I saw, I read, yeah, no, I read that. And actually, you described it in your handout. And I was just... I wasn't sure... Let me just look at what I read. Yeah, it says they grow three to six feet. So...
They grow five to 10 feet.
In height. And we're less...
Five to six feet.
Yeah. Just as long as, at the end of the day, we can't see the fence. So if it turns out that you need more than 15, you just wanna make sure that you can't see the fence when you're done. And that would be the only comment I'd have. So any other questions, comments, or a motion, or...
I'd like to move that we adopt the proposal as submitted and discussed here this afternoon.
I'm sorry, can I just... One question?
Oh, yes.
Sorry. I... To Lisa's point, and Dave and Amy are probably sick with me, I'm actually... I'm sorry, I'm Karen DeFiore. I'm on the board of Barden Woods 1.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Karen. I thought we were done.
No, it's okay. I didn't raise my hand. I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
And we just have had real problems because our condominiums are high, and Barden Woods 2 is very low. Why they allowed that to be built in the gully is a whole different situation, but poor Dave and Amy have heard me year after year that the drains on Barden Road are completely insufficient to accept the water during a rainstorm. I'm sure when this beautiful pool, which I love the idea of a plunge pool, fabulous idea, I mean, they won't empty the few gallons out when it's, you know, a torrential downpour anyway, so I don't think that that's an issue. It's just the impervious situation that concerns me, that we're gonna have... And we need all the dirt we can to absorb this water, because those drains are completely insufficient, and it does not go into the little pond off of our... The... We have a problem. We're dealing with vaughn crossing now, because that has broken down... What do you call it? Whatever. All right, go ahead. No, I got an idea, Dave. You talk about it, because you understand it. It'll be better back.
We are trying to help the associations with an issue. The issue is that there's public property drainage, and there are storm sewers in the road. And what happens is, in particular, the property on Barden, there's kind of a slope down to the road, and when there's excess water, it fills up our storm drains, because the storm drains are having difficulty getting through the private property component of it. So the private property component of it, there's some breakdown of the pipes, and we're trying to work and help them from an engineering perspective and sort of, you know, give them some advice and some ways to take care of the issue. But the city part of it works, but there's some problems with the private part of it, so it does cause an issue. But what we are doing is, we're trying to just be more aware of making sure the storm drains that are out there, they're not blocked in any way, raise paying extra attention, but there's only so much we can do. But the residents there certainly do have a concern because the water is backed up, but they... I think they're in a process of trying to find something to do with it.
We... The solutions we've had are to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars, and the average age in my community is like 88. To tell people that you each need to, you know, flip in 50 grand, it's not gonna happen. So we're kind of between a rock and a hard place, just because of socioeconomics. Yes, it would be great. We have huge plans to, you know, do grandiose things, but I'm the treasurer, actually. It's not gonna happen. So we're kind of stuck in vaughn crossing, is not really jumping on it, because they're not getting water in their basements. It's hard for us, because we don't have water in our basements, but Barden Woods 2, who they're not here today, but they're the ones that have the real problems, because they're losing cars, elevators. Unfortunately, our insurance is tied together because of complex issues, but... So we had a million-dollar claim when the water went into the elevators of Barden Woods 2, which caused my community money. And it just... All we see are snow wallings, so we're just... I'm just, for my community's sake, just saying, we need to be aware of the impervious situation, because we need every tree and every whatever to soak up it. I'll let you be the deciding factor, David, because I know you're the expert, and I'm just trying to make sure.
Oh, no, not at all, but we... Just so the Planning Commission knows that we are well aware, but we're trying to work with them. I suppose the only consideration for the Planning Commission is that our engineer, which could be Leah, understands or can relate this to the City, to the Planning Commission, that the work being done on that property is not gonna cause any issues with water. And I lead that...
And that was exactly where I was headed. So Leah, is this going to impact...
They're not adding any...
They have... I've heard these issues, and it seems like they got some real issues, but what they're doing here is pretty... Is a relatively small improvement?
Right, they're not adding any impervious area.
Okay. So just to your... Karen, to your question, what they're doing here is a fairly small improvement, and you guys, without knowing all the details, obviously have, you know, have issues there, but this isn't going to aggravate what you've got going on there. So...
Well, I have a motion on the floor.
Yes.
And I will also amend my motion to indicate that the city's very competent engineer has provided her professional guidance that the... Has been discussed. Will not be an issue.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Good luck with your poll. So our next item is, "The Planning Commission will consider the request of the property owner at 135 Bridgeview Drive for site plan approval and a grading variance to construct a new home." This was actually... This was in front of us a couple of years ago. We approved a house, and this is for a new house and a new owner. And I see the developer in the audience. And, I see the developer in the audience, and he knows when this was originally approved, every house in the subdivision needs approval from the planning commission because he enjoys coming to see the planning. So, Eric, take it away.
Okay, so our next item for consideration is 135 Bridgeview Drive, and as was stated, the planning commission considered a full site plan. Proposed home back in February of 2023, but as was stated, the, that plan did not move forward, and so the approvals went away, and so the applicant is back with a new, new development for the site. This is located within the A3 zoning district, so the standards for the A3 district apply. This is within quite a wet area, so the, the buildable area is limited to essentially right up against the street, and then back here, there's a lot of wetland and sensitive areas that, happy to say, are not impacted by the proposed development, so, this is just a close-up. You can kind of see the trajectory of the, the water feature here, and then all of this is natural area which limits the buildable area to the, to the street. So, this lot is unique in the sense that it abuts both Bridgeview Drive here and then East Long Lake to the north, so it has two front yards and no rear yard. And then on either side of the house, there are two side yards. And this is just a zoomed-in perspective, you can see that there's no additional accessory features that are proposed, essentially because of the restrictions on the buildable area, so... When going through the ordinance standards, our review has determined that the proposed home does exceed the height limitation of thirty feet. So, two stories, thirty feet is the height limitation for homes. The home is two stories, but unfortunately is thirty-three feet in height. The applicant did make some modifications to the roof pitch, I believe it was, in order to strive to comply with the ordinance, but with the degree of the cuts and the fills and the alterations to the, to the grading that impact the average grade determination, which is where you make your height measurements from, it was not achievable to, to reach thirty feet in height. So, subject to planning commission approving this, this will go before the zoning board of appeals on Tuesday. Again, looking at the ordinance standards, we have a distance of about twenty-four feet from the closest point of the house to the natural, natural feature setback. The natural feature's an additional twenty-five feet, so it's all of this area that's sensitive towards, towards development and remaining untouched. Looking at the height analysis of the proposed building, this is looking from the front. So, I won't go into the details about determining the average grade, but it's based on cuts and fills that determines where this average grade line falls around the perimeter of the building. So, from the front perspective, your height is always measured to the midpoint of the roof, which is this blue line here. You can see that the maximum roof height is the pink line. The roof eaves is the lower por- point of the roof, so the midpoint is this blue here. And that distance from the average grade, which is an imaginary line, is thirty-three feet. So, it's three feet too tall to this point, and just for perspective, I wanted to throw in where the thirty-foot limitation would be. So, the home is required to, to be at thirty feet, shown there in green. And then the rear elevation, to just show a different perspective, again, there's that imaginary line of the average grade, which was calculated by the applicant and confirmed to be correct. And again, making measurements to the midpoint of the highest roof is this blue line here. Again, that's thirty-three feet, and then just for comparison, the thirty-foot limitation is, is shown here. So, we also, as a site plan for single-family residential, we look at all things with the tree and woodlands, the landscape plan, and with this particular proposal, there's, I believe, five trees that are being removed outside the development area, the development footprint, which requires a replacement, I think this is nine, nine trees required to equal twenty-five point five inches in caliper size. And so with their landscape plan, we went through the analysis to determine that what they're proposing in terms of trees here meet that requirement. So, their replacement requirements are being met with their landscape plan. We have side yard mechanical units over here, which are screened by twelve Emerald Green Arborvitae at five feet in height, so that's subject to the approval of the building official when this goes through permitting and inspections. And again, the, normally new homes require the algebraic setback. This is exempt from that, per the original approvals of the subdivision, so the pinch points are the side yards, but the, the home does comply with minimum setbacks on all sides. And then the last few slides here just show color rendering perspectives. This is looking at the home from the street, a little bit of an elevated perspective, and then from the rear. And the city engineer's here to discuss the changes to, to the grading and all, all engineering standards. Any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question. Are any of the other homes on this street that don't have to comply with that setback that we all had to do, as tall?
Uh, there is, there, there's one other one, and I can't recall if it received a variance, but there is one that does ring a bell. I don't know, Walt, if you recall?
You know, I don't know if we ended up needing to give it a variance, but one, one comment I'd offer is, when we reviewed this originally, there's a couple of different things going on here that sort of complicate it. And, the original application that came in front of us two years ago had a variance that was about the same, it was two or three feet, because this lot drops off so quickly in the back. And, when you look at the front door, that finished grade at the front, it's only, I think, about a foot or two above where the road is, which is, is pretty... Ideally, you want your, your finished grade at the front, a little bit above the road. So, I think they've been sort of close. I think the house across the street is, it's a big house. But, I think...
Do you have an answer?
If you don't mind, Eddie May City, developer and the house across the street.
Oh, okay.
So, back when I built my house, when you did the average grade, it was calculated differently. I think the ordinance was interpreted differently, or it's changed, one of the two, because it didn't include the back of the house, it included just the front. So, this house here is well below my house. In fact, if I was building it, I'd be pushing this whole thing a lot higher because I like the front door to be three feet above the, the curb, not one or one and a half feet. It's just the, the way the ordinance is being interpreted now or written, it's really pushing these houses down. As you can see, that is not a real tall house, it's got normal height for the first floor and second floor with actually a reduced pitch of what I, today's standards, and it's still breaking the ordinance.
What is the, what is the first and second floor ceiling heights?
Well, I think those are just like nine, I think it was nine foot second floor, ten foot first floor?
Ten foot first, nine second, and the roof pitch is, was sent to the HOA because they require a ten-twelve, and we had to reduce it to six.
Yeah, like my house example, I got, I think, eleven foot for first floor, twelve foot, I'm sorry, nine foot second, nine, ten foot second floor, and my pitch is, I think, either ten-twelve or twelve-tall pitch. I'm way higher than this, so, the, the ordinance is creating difficulties that I've seen in, in our subdivision, the way it's being interpreted now.
Just to clarify, I don't believe the ordinance has changed. I believe that several years back, the fella that was overseeing, I think it was Sly, what was his name, Sly? Who was our inspector way back when, about fifteen years ago?
Building inspector?
Yeah.
I think it was Alice Al was doing the review.
Yeah, but the, the, was it, I wanna say Sly, what was his name?
Site, site owner.
Yeah, there, there were just some different things that happened. You got a big house, it's a tall house, it's a beautiful house. But, this is what we followed, and this is pretty straightforward. What we do is, where there's unusual circumstances, we give way to that. And so, that's what's happening here. And, we approved a three-foot variance on this two years ago when we approved this home. And, I think we looked, we, we looked, in, in fact, it may be the house, there's another house in the back, I think, that had an issue too.
Right, that same thing, roof's fast dropped off.
Yeah, and so, where there's extraordinary circumstances, what we're doing here is, it's a straight calcu- it's a straight engineering calculation. So, it's not like someone's, you know, looking at something and interpreting it differently. Just for your information.
I think the prior person didn't look at the rear yards, they only looked at the front and sides or something, because otherwise, I would have needed a variance, and I didn't get one.
Maybe we'll go back and look at yours. Anyway. But, so, in answer to Commissioner's question, are there others, there may be?
So, it's gonna look great. Everyone's gonna like that.
This is gonna look fine.
That's great.
Yeah, no, I like the look, I just don't wanna have to push it down any further.
That's great.
Just for perspective, the finished grade here, so the, the visibility of looking at the house when it's finished, it will be relatively thirty feet to the midpoint because you're accounting for removing this distance. So, this is just a technicality of thirty-three feet, but in reality, from, from the finished grade, from the ground up, it'll be very close to thirty feet.
Yeah, there's nothing unusual, and if you look at the, the way this is, is showing, much of the home really doesn't have that, that elevated height on each side, so, it's nothing that's gonna look out of the ordinary, it'll look just fine.
If you don't mind, I'd like to add one other thing. The, to develop the association agreement, the bylaws, I had to give a variance because it, it doesn't meet the bylaws of association. Roof pitches had to be at a certain steepness that they're not making. To try to lower as much as they can to meet the city ordinances. But, the city has also approved, reviewed and approved my association because this whole thing was a big package back in two thousand and five when we did this. So, the, the development or the association agreement, which was reviewed by the city, approved the roof pitches minimums, which this house is, you know, got a variance for, so, just to keep that in mind too. That, that the city was expecting roof pitches to be this or, or actually greater.
So, you're, you're saying that this proposed structure is consistent with the current HOA bylaws?
Had to get, had to get a small variance of a reduced roof pitch. To, to meet, to meet...
They wanted higher?
We have, we're not dissatisfied with you.
Okay.
Satisfied with your, your requirements, we had to reduce the pitch a little bit from the association, which association approved it.
Thank you.
We'll take a six-foot variance if you want.
Any other questions right now?
So, there is also a grading ordinance variance requested for this property. There are fills up to six feet being proposed. So, other than that, the storm water management, which I'll, I'll point to is part of the overall subdivision system and associated wetlands that are in the area. The home is located outside the hundred-year flood plain, and we did anticipate some grading would be required back when this subdivision was developed. So, I wanted to first point to the drainage. We have a, a front and a rear drainage, there's a drain that goes behind the home that will capture the storm water running that way. The storm water heading towards the road is captured by the subdivision's storm water system. And the way they're proposing the grading along the driveway is to have a swale to be directing the water in either direction and not onto the neighbor's property.
So, can I ask you a question about that, Leah? Because as I look at the, at the cut and fills, it looks awfully close to level between unit ten and unit nine along the boundary line, and I don't, I mean, there's no drainage installation along the boundaries?
Yeah, so you can kind of see by these contour lines that they, they will be putting in a swale to direct the water towards the road and towards the back, so there is some grading changes along here that will be made.
I mean, there's just a lot of fills going in right there, yeah. I don't know, it just seems like that's a, gonna be a pressure point for some storm water that could be dumped on the neighbor.
Yeah, so they are, they are making some modifications here to the ground that we do feel would address, will address that situation.
Do they need add drainage in there to sort of cut to the chase?
Edging?
Some kind of drainage in there?
We could discuss it with them, it wasn't proposed, but couldn't hurt.
Any drains on the driveway? Any of the drainage channels on the driveway?
I'm not familiar with this, but drainage on the driveway is where?
Well, um...
So, the question is?
Like, the, the, the ones that work really nicely are the, the ones that are just a grade across it, normal pitch, around, yeah, channel drains, around, so it's on the driveway, it's across the driveway, it's right into, it's an asphalt driveway, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, it goes right into the asphalt driveway, it's an iron gate. It seems if you're having those kind of swales, it, it just slows it down a little?
Actually, the answer to the question, what you ought to consider is just some perforated drain tile. You know, just, if you put some drain tiles, some six-inch, you know, you know perforated drain tile, just to address these two commissioners' concerns. If you've got the water coming off, so it's not going off into the neighbor's yard, just at the bottom, you just put some drain tile back in the wa- in the swale, and it catches the water so that...
Also depends on the soil composition too, but I mean, do you feel like the swale will...
Well, I think we could work with you to add something to the driveway just to capture the water before it flows off of it, that's what they're asking for.
It's so silly, it's just so much, do you have your, in this design, do you have your, the water coming off the roof going, being buried below, or do you have it coming?
Yeah, no, it, it goes into drain tiles and send, send off.
Yeah, they're required to, I'll let that be on the home.
So, it doesn't go underneath or connect up to any pipes or anything at that point? You are, it's going into drain tiles and then slowly going, or is it going below?
I think we tie it into the storm or the...
The storm, the drainage around the property?
Yeah, not a hundred percent sure on that.
Well, to the north, there's just nothing but wetlands out there, just dump it out there.
Back here, correct?
Yeah.
Lot their property exceeds very far back there.
Maybe to sort of cut to the chase, if, if you put some drain tile, it's not a long area, put some perforated drain tile along the property line, or just into the property line, so it's catching the water that's coming down, so it's not collecting in, to that swale and going onto the neighbor's property.
And it naturally flows downwards towards the right anyway, so it's gonna, so maybe the only point of concern would be that...
So, yeah, maybe just in this area, just a little bit of other drain.
It's become such a point of contention with these neighbors when someone does that, and they're, you know, so just keep hitting that one. But, it's easier, cheaper to do right at the, putting in asphalt drive time.
If you don't mind, being a contractor and a developer, looking at those grade lines there, that swell will handle any water coming off that driveway easily. That, you got a pretty nice swell there going down pretty fast. I would not, being the next-door neighbor or the cross-street neighbor and being a developer, I have no worries about what he's doing there.
Okay.
Not at all.
Okay, go ahead.
And also too, if you remember, on the cut fills and... And also too, if you remember, on the cut fill situation, I worked with the city back in 2005 to maintain the beauty of the subdivision and I'll keep all the trees until each house was built. We, we contemplated needing to do this when each house was built. We addressed it one at a time. So that way we didn't just as a developer come and just clear cotton, grade everything off real nice and nice for the subdivision to be built later. We tried to keep the beauty there and do it one at a time. So this was all expected back in 2005.
This the last one?
Oh, no, there's a lot, one's going to be developed, which doesn't really need any grade change. That one's pretty flat to begin with. And then we got lot five, lot seven, lot eight. And lot four will have to be addressed here sooner or later. Yeah, lot one will be in here soon, in the next probably a few months, they're, they're getting ready to go.
That's great.
Okay.
So we stopped before we actually showed the grading, grading plan, but this is what is proposed. And they are stepping down the rear with retaining walls to try to limit the area of fill there for the driveway. And as the chair noted, back in 2023, it was, it was a different home, a different situation that was approved. But just wanted to show a similar area, similar need to have fill in that area to just get the driveway to work on this site, so. But this is what's before you today for this, this home.
Do you guys, do you want to make, let us know who you are?
I mean, I'm sorry, Anthony Sheen from Sapphire, and obviously we're building, building a home and property. But I agree with you, I've seen the slope and the side of the swale and the pitch is going to handle more, more than capable of handling you want it without having to put drain tiles or channels or anything else.
This is going to be spec home?
No.
No, you're building it for a client?
Good question.
Well, I think I've seen, you're doing stuff over, were you doing stuff over at Linden Arlington Shirley? Were you doing, was that recent Sapphire over there?
Which one, which, which?
It was Linden Arlington or Shirley, the mess that was over there. No, you don't have one over there?
So we can't blame you for it.
No, no, it's fine, it's fine. No, the roads were mess, you weren't a mess. I would, I had seen one of your places recently, that's why I just thought it was there.
You have to, you built spec over there.
Yeah. Okay.
I have, I have one question. So when I look, so you got a 100 year flood plain in the back? And so when I look at this, it looks like the, you got a walkout. And the, the first, the, the grade elevation of the walkout is like, is like.
Lowest level of the.
It's 841. I mean, yeah, so you're at 841. And this shows like the improved 100 year flood plain is at 840. And we've always personally worked in a sort of a rule of thumb of be two feet above the flood plain. Are you guys comfortable? So you're really just a foot above, the first floor elevation is a foot above.
Basement floor elevation.
Right, no, I get it. But it's a, it's a walkout. So, you know, water, you know, water, it's a 100 year flood plain. And so I understand how it works. So did you guys consider that? I mean, a foot's not a, it's not, it's not a lot. In the water in that area, I don't know that area real well, but, but I know I have often heard about floods in that area. So are you guys comfortable with that?
We're comfortable and obviously they're in here and.
Okay. I just figured I'd ask a question.
Yeah, we're comfortable with that. And plus it's a 100 year flood plain, so.
Yeah.
Well, I can man that one too. I've been living in my house for 12 years and we've had some pretty hard rains these last couple of years. I don't know why it's the dam over there on the other side of a lake controls it, but I have not seen the water raise from that lake more than this much. It, I, it doesn't flood. And I'm talking about during heavy rains.
I'll say Mr. Mancini instead of Eddie. So it, does that affect the water over here too?
Well, that's all, it's all connected to the bridge, which is not huge.
Okay, so not an issue?
I, I don't think it will be.
Okay, I was just asking the question, you know, a foot's not, I've seen water over the, a foot's not a big deal. I think, didn't the city, they have floods in recent years? Like where that 100 year was, it was like, well, we had a more of a, we had more significant floods?
No, the, the culvers.
Right, those are the same.
I don't know that's going to change much, but we'll have to find out.
Okay. We don't even have to discuss it, I just wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, they're similar.
If everyone's comfortable, that's fine. Okay. Any other questions or anything? I, I, I'm not sure. No, the fellow behind.
I'm here with different watchers.
Oh, okay. Any other questions or comments or a motion?
I'd like to move, move that we accept the proposal that has been submitted for a site plan and for a grading variance.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Good luck with your health.
Thank you.
I know, I just have a question.
If there's no.
It's a call, it's a call.
Any other comments or, okay? If that's it, I'll call our meeting to a conclusion.